Call the committee of the whole workshop to order a roll call.
Trustee Bonucci?
Here.
Trustee Fay?
Here.
Trustee Lamb?
Here.
Trustee Peck?
Here.
Trustee Rassage?
Here.
Trustee Rippey?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here, if we can rise for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and committee of the whole workshop held on October 13th.
So move.
Start it.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries presidential comments.
Just one quick one, you see some phone calls about the haunted house, all positive. So they said, "See you next year," so doing a great job over there, that's all.
Trustees' comments?
Well, I'd like to say, as long as the mayor brought up the haunted house, on behalf of the Foundation for Excellence, who partnered with the police department, we thank all of you, we thank everyone who came out, hope you had a great time. And trustee Rippey and I had the opportunity to visit Plainfield North class, and I see some of those students in the class, I do recognize a few of you back there, there you go, Mrs. Torrey's class, that was, that was a lot of fun, it was Public Officials Day, and we got to answer some questions, ask some questions, hopefully encourage these young students to get out there, register, vote, and be heard, and that's all I have for tonight.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I just have two comments, this past weekend I attended two village events that were on the fun side instead of being too dramatic, one was the annual picnic at the EJ&E depot number four across the street, where the official dedication of the 1956 EJ&E caboose and cars were made, in addition, unfortunately, we had to close the depot for the season, they had a picnic, it was a lot of fun, and they also, on October the 11th, the society, Plainfield Historical Society relocated an air beacon tower, and that is, they're looking for if someone could possibly donate a light. A second thing that I attended over the weekend was the Plainfield Police Department Explorer Post 127, they hosted an open house at the law enforcement center on Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00. What it did is, it showed this, the police explorers demonstrated the skills they had learned throughout the past year, in addition to that, there were all of the usual police things, they had the police cars, fires, fire trucks, et cetera, and the haunted house down in the lower level. They said I was the scariest thing to go into it, but short of that, it was a fun time, a beautiful weekend, and Plainfield really shined again. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments?
One brief one, I also, I got to attend the craft show at the high school, that was put on by the band boosters, and something that trustee Bonucci puts her heart and soul into every year, it was a huge success, my wife spent quite a bit of money supporting the band boosters, so which was at least a good cause, but I want to congratulate trustee Bonucci on putting that on and supporting the kids, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other trustee comments? This would be the time for public comments on items not on the agenda, not to exceed three to five minutes per topic. There are no public comments, and we'll proceed with the workshop meeting, first item on the agenda is 2014 tax levy.
I'll gladly hand it over to Mrs. Pleckham when she's ready.
Okay, good evening, we'll be talking tonight about the village's 2014 tax levy, this year, we wanted to give a little history and talk about where staff's recommendations are for going forward, and the tax levy for the following year. The first chart, which you also have the information in your packet, is the history on the equalized assessed value for the village, this determines primarily, it's a large product of the calculation of the rate for the tax levy for the village, as you can see, from 2009 to 2013, we've seen a reduction in our equalized assessed value of a net of just under 18 percent, since the year 2010, we've actually seen a reduction of 19.25 percent. The good news is, is that the EAV is starting to stabilize, 2013's assessed value only was reduced by just over 2 percent, and preliminary numbers that we're seeing from the counties are reflecting about the same, pretty much stagnant, if anything, we're estimating that it's going to be reduced by about 2 percent, and the reason behind that is there are a number of challenges that are out there right now that are quite sizable, that have not been determined, and the assessed valuation does not get finalized until the spring of 2015. So at this point, what we're seeing is, what we're recommending is a slight reduction in EAV to be used for the calculation of where we're going to for this year's tax levy. In the past, past rates and past extensions are reflected on this page, and what I'd like to point out are a couple of things, on the top left slide of the slide are the property tax rates, and back in 2003 through 2006, and some of you that were around will remember, the village was a non-home rule community, and at that point, the tax rate was determined, and there was a limitation put against the rates that could be charged of inflation, which was no greater than 5 percent, I would submit that the increases at that point, and the increases in the property tax rates, and the evaluations that go across to the village couldn't be probably more on the average of 3 percent. Where I'm going with this is that EAV from 2003 to 2006 increased each year approximately 25 percent on average, so our assessed value in 2003 was just over 500 million, when you get to about 2006, 1.1 billion in assessed valuation in the village, the growth was occurring, we were in a non-home rule situation, in 2006, the village became home rule, and why I bring that up is what you'll see from 2006 to 2010 on the top picture of the rates, the village board had maintained the tax rate at that point in time, that is why the line goes straight across, during that timeframe was probably the highest assessed value, but it did start to decline as was reflected on the prior slide, so you can see the 5% to 6% reductions happening later in those years. So on the bottom slide, you'll see the extensions that came across, and this is the dollars that were extended to the village during that time, so it pretty much flattened, it went up a little high, 2009, and that's where we saw the first EAV reduction, and the change of 5.87, 2010, and extended to 12. The following years, 11 to 13, this is where staff has maintained the same extension, the 5.367 million, which is at the bottom of that slide, so the past few years, the village's property tax extension has remained the same. Staff is recommending this year that an attempt to maintain the rate of .4669 comes into play, so instead of the extension at 5.367 million, staff is recommending that the rate remains the same. What happens is, the board was here back in 2010, and those prior years, how the process works is that the tax levy is based on a dollar figure, when the rates come across back to the village for authorization, back in March, it'll be in March of 2015, then I will send a notice to both counties requesting that the rate be maintained at .4669. So that means, we will extend a dollar amount, the recommendation is to extend a dollar amount of 5 million, should I have this dollar amount in front of me, levy request is 5,486,100, so we can capture the entire rate of .4669. And I'll go over it in a little more detail, I wanted to show you a little bit of where the distribution lies, and what we're estimating from a staff level as far as dollars coming into the village. On the left column is the 2013 levy request, this is the funds that we have already levied for last year, 5.367 million in total, and how it's broken out amongst the different funds that we have within the village. With the estimate of a 2% reduction in EAV, staff is estimating just over 100,000 in levy dollars lost, primarily though, we're going to see the biggest hit in our general operations or our corporate fund of just about 295,000, and as you can see in that far-left column, the differences fall in a couple different areas, the largest being toward immunity, and the reason why that difference is a little higher, that's our liability, and workers' comp insurance, we've had some fund balance in that fund for a couple of years, we're at a point now where we need to levy the full amount of the cost of our immunity insurance, so from an audit perspective, we need to increase the fund so we can pay the full amount of the cost for this next year. The police pension would be the next line item that staff is recommending to increase, the actuarial values are coming to the village at about 930,000, so the intent is to fully fund police pension from the corporate fund, and that is why you'll see the change of the $50,000. So this is the estimate that staff is presenting as far as where we believe the dollars will come in, again, what is being recommended for a levy extension is the larger 5,486,100, only to ensure that the rate itself of .4669 can be extended and passed on, so the rate is recommending to remain the same, however, because we don't have a full EAV amount that's been finalized, staff recommends to have a slightly higher assessed value, which turns into a little higher total levy request to publish and to authorize, and then again, in the spring, once the assessed values are determined and the rate gets extended to the village, then my job would be to go back and make sure that the rate is maintained at .4669. So hopefully, that explains a little bit of the process, the other thing I wanted to show, just as an example, this is last year's property tax, on a $250,000 home, the village of Plainfield's portion is under 5%, about $360, just over that, in a house that has no change in assessed value for this upcoming year, they would see no change in the property taxes for the village portion only of the levy, I can't speak to the other taxing bodies, but I wanted to reflect, again, the village is at 4.93 percent from last year, we expect to be about the same, if not less, for the next tax bill. As far as the process is concerned, after this workshop, we will present the preliminary estimate at the November 3rd board meeting, in the amount of the 5,486,100, the public hearing will be December 1st, and the adoption of the ordinance could either be December 1st or December 15th, the property tax levy needs to be filed before the last Tuesday in December. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions relating to the levy.
If I can add, as you know, as Mrs. Pleckham pointed out earlier, for the last five years, we've either kept our dollar amount the same, or been lower than previously done, and that was a conscious decision that we made, that we didn't actually want to raise our revenues, however, we took a position that we had to maintain at least what we had, frankly, only the village of Plainfield and Will County are the two agencies that can still take credit that our dollar amount that we brought in was either the same or less, now, we'll be the only one after this year, because Will County is asking for an increase. That being said, throughout those years that we kept the dollar amount the same, we kept on hearing regularly from our residents that our rate was changing, and what gives, we'd like to see the rate stay the same. We are, we hear that, and so we're taking the position that we'll keep the rate the same as it was last year, it will result in a reduction of revenues, however, we're at a pretty good position at this time, that we feel comfortable going back to our previous model and keeping the rates the same. It will, again, more than likely result in about a $300,000 decrease to the corporate account, at least from the property tax side, but we feel that we're at a point where we can do that. You know, of course, as you know, up until this particular audit was completed, and we were able to move some monies around to be able to pay off some deficit situations, I don't think we would have been in a position to be able to make that recommendation until after this year's audit. So again, I want to thank all of you for your heavy lifting, that you've taken the last five years, and I especially want to thank the directors and the staff for their heavy work as well, to get us to a point where we actually can go back to using a rate, and more importantly, pass on, although it's a very small dollar amount, but potentially pass along a savings back to our residents.
Tracy, I have a question for you, could you go back to the slide where it showed last year's rate on the $250,000 home?
This one?
Yeah. Based on this, if this housing value has gone down to, say, $200,000, then their tax bill actually, for the first time, will also go down, correct?
Correct, the rate will remain the same.
Keeping the same rate rather than the same.
For the village portion.
Correct.
I can't speak to the rest.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, graphs are amazing things, you look at the property tax rates, and wow, it's going up like a rocket, it's 15% over five, well, eight years, it's very insignificant, we have made an effort to keep it level, as Brian and Tracy have just said, and our share of the total tax, property taxes, has gone down every year, and we're comfortable, I'm comfortable with what we've done, and I think I like your proposal, so, but when it first became home rule, I was just on the board at that point in time, and we did decide to level things off and not increase, and we have indeed done that, despite what appears on the graphs, we've not really taken any more money in, because we'd like to keep that one, you know, separate, if you will, so.
Every time this particular tax distribution by district is presented by the village of Plainfield, I always get into my particular bandstand mode and talk about the litany of goodness that the village of Plainfield manages to produce, and if you had the tax distribution, there are eight districts that your tax bill is broken down into, the village of Plainfield, if you have $100 of assessment, we get $4.93, the school district gets $65, and 75% of that hundred is broken down into different districts, for all of the services that are performed by the village of Plainfield, and only to produce out of your tax bill, $4.93 is efficiency beyond belief, and I have to applaud not only our administration, but all of the different departments that produce the efficiency that is obviously evident, and it's really a great thing to see that every year it remains about the same, under $5 out of 100 go to the village of Plainfield, and that is marvelous, thank you.
I've seen other local and state and layers of government raise taxes just because they can, and I've even heard other elected officials from other government bodies say, "If we don't max our levy out, we can never get that money back," and my mindset is, there's no need to overtax residents and figure out what to do with the money and take it just because you can, and I'm glad that our staff and this administration is seeing eye-to-eye with that culture and not taking money just because they can, so, right now, I have to say, this is a result of a lot of hard work from qualified staff, and thank you for being able to put us in a position to be able to vote on decreased property tax bill from the village portion if at all possible, thank you.
Okay, if we're comfortable going in this direction, which it sounds as though there's convergence on that, then we will bring this forward, as Mrs. Pleckham said, to either the December 1st or December 15th, I think we'd rather get done for December the 1st, only so that we have everything in order, and it appears that we, as long as we can meet the deadlines for publishing in the newspapers and other publishing requirements, then that's what we'll go for, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is HRM Development, Droughton and Route 126.
Yes, thank you, this matter comes before the village board, pursuant to our policy with regards to whenever there's a major, perhaps conceptual question before the village board as it relates to land use, what we historically have done is brought a concept plan, therefore, based on this fact, we are bringing in a concept to see if there's any potential support by the village board on this proposed concept. With regards to the actual concept itself, the property is located at the southwestern corner of Route 126 and Droughton Road, you'll recall, back in 2006, the village board did approve a gas city for this site, actually, a portion of this site, the property is approximately 38 acres, is being proposed by HRM Development with regards to the concept, it would also propose incorporate basically approximately a fuel station and a car wash, in addition to a fuel station and car wash, which would hold a hard corner, there will also be a 20,000 square foot retail building, in addition to a 40,000 square foot commercial slash office building. The question that's really coming before you this evening is really a conceptual question, is there any potential support for the proposed multifamily component of this development? The applicant is proposing as part of this development, a 336-unit apartment development, just regards to context, this property is currently not actually annexed, there was a previous annexation agreement for the village of Plainfield, there is an annexation corridor, but this property is currently located in unincorporated Will County. Just for, again, with regards to the comp plan, the comp plan does identify this property as medium density, which generally, again, incorporates a density between 2.1 to 3 units an acre, as I've highlighted in my staff report, obviously, a multifamily component would generally incorporate a slightly higher density of 10 units or more, so that would not be consistent with the comp plan, so the applicant, if there's any support for the multifamily component, the board would basically need to support a modification or change to the comp plan. The applicant is proposing the multifamily component as a proposed buffer to the commercial property of, with regards to the commercial component of this project, as you know, we've identified Droughton Road and 126 as incorporating several small neighborhood commercial nodes within this major intersection, generally, staff does support the commercial component, as you know, the board has already set policy with regards to the gas station, we do believe with future development along the 126 corridor, there will be an opportunity for future commercial development at this small neighborhood node. The fundamental question before the board this evening, is there any support for a multifamily component to this proposed project? The applicant, Mr. Oliver, Harold Oliver, is actually here this evening to answer any questions or provide any additional information that the board may have this evening, and with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the village board may have.
Does he have a presentation?
I'm sorry?
Have some questions, if there's more presentation, then...
No, again, this is just conceptual, the only real presentation is the actual conceptual drawing that you have on your computer screen.
Okay, well, I'll start asking some questions, and during the comprehensive plan, we noticed that there's a large area in the southwest part of town that needs to be developed, it's only about 2%, we have services for, I don't know, 20,000 or something like that, it's only 2% utilized right now, so we'd like to develop that, one of the things we talked about in those discussions is having nodes around schools or something else, that would provide the character we'd like to have for that development. True, we're talking about medium density, but I think one of the things you need is some commercial, it's talking about a medical building, I believe, a car, gas station, which we've long desired to have there, if we're going to develop the southwest area, it seems to me we're going to need to get some commercial in that area to help attract the other kind of developments that we want in that area. I don't know where we stand on the southwest plan, or where you stand, or how you view this fitting in with the southwest plan, but appreciate if you want to comment on that.
Well, this plan is technically just a little bit north of the southwestern plan, as you recall, that area was basically, was very close to this site, but that was basically bordered by Droughton and Renwick Road, I think there is some question of whether support for that, staff did come back with some revisions to the southwestern plan, but I think the direction at this point is that generally, the board did not support the general overall density that was proposed in the southwestern plan, and based on that fact, staff was advised to maybe modify that, I think staff, basically, the board supports the current density in the comp plan, which is, again, between 2.1 to 3 units an acre for the southwestern plan. I think the real question before the board is, as you know, we've had a very successful project, we did approve the Springs approximately two years ago, that's been a very successful project, 340 units, there's an additional 200 units that's approved as part of the Grand Park development, which is, there's been really no, as of right now, no development, the question is, is there, would the market support another apartment development in Plainfield, does the board believe at this point it's appropriate to have another apartment development, or is there a saturation point, that's really a philosophical question before the board. Generally, if you would have a multifamily, it may be appropriate, I'm not saying this is an appropriate location, but generally, you would locate a multifamily development at two major collectors or arterials next to a commercial, no, that's typically where multifamily likes to be placed, whether it's a major arterial like Route 59, i.e. the Springs project, or this, so theoretically, this could be an appropriate location, because it is at an intersection of two major collector streets.
Well, we've had three different proposals for apartments beyond the Springs, one north of 127th Street, another one just south of 143rd, and now this one, do we have a preference, does any one of them make more sense for developing the town the way we expect it to be, in your perspective?
Well, I think from staff's perspective, in the perfect world, you know, we've all supported multifamily, slightly higher density in the downtown, now, where that, where that location would be, I think that's a fundamental question, but we think that, at the end of the day, having multifamily in the downtown to support the density to have a vibrant downtown does make sense, now, obviously, this is not in the downtown, whether this makes sense at this site, that's really why the applicant's coming before the board this evening, to see if there's any support for a multifamily component within this project, again, staff would generally identify any future multifamily, probably should locate it, A, adjacent to commercial, as a buffer, or as a slightly higher density, which would help support the commercial, and B, at two major collectors, or to an arterial, whether this is appropriate site, that's really a question that's for the village board this evening.
Well, one of the sites that's been proposed in the past, which is, I guess, inactive, is immediately west of here, we're talking about, you know, condos and lower-level mixed use, and then townhouses behind that, that gets you closer to downtown, is there any movement or thought of doing that one?
That, there's actually movement on that project, that, you know, there's, we're working with a potential developer on the residential component, but as it relates to the multifamily and commercial, to be frank, that's something, you know, we probably won't see for a number of years because of the fairly ambitious nature of that multifamily mixed use, i.e. there are probably three, four-story buildings with commercial on the first floor, and to be frank, the market's simply not there yet for that type of development, so that's something that we probably won't see in immediate future, but in the long term, we, staff continues to support that type of development as part of our expanded downtown.
Would any of the apartment complexes that have been proposed, this one or one south of 143rd Street, help that along, provide more bodies in the immediate vicinity?
We believe that whenever you have an opportunity to have more rooftops, to some extent, within a mile, half a mile of your downtown, that there is some ancillary positive aspect for your downtown, or any, any commercial development, so that would theoretically, would potentially help some of our downtown development, obviously, there's, with regards to restaurants and retail, there's more rooftops, whether it's single-family, townhomes, or multifamily, I think that's inherently a good thing for our downtown and other commercial users throughout the village.
And how far away is this one?
This is probably at least a mi, over a mile.
Just over a mile, okay, all right, thank you. Michael, do you recall what the acreage was at the Springs?
I wanted to say it was 17 or 18 acres, it was, it was less than 20 acres.
Thank you.
You have a question for Mr. Oliver, do you realize there are no utilities going to that particular site currently?
We're very aware of that.
And you would provide the cost for that?
Yes, we would, it's approximately $750,000 to...
Okay, a second question for you, Mr. Oliver, lies with the fact is, because we've received very little information other than the basic chart that you have passed out, could you give a overview, perhaps a brief overview, what your concept is for this apartment complex?
Sure, I actually brought some, I brought some passouts that are here, after the meeting, you're welcome to get, if, you're very familiar with the Springs, first of all, I'm Harold Oliver, HRM Properties, I'm sure you're all aware of Van Dyke Place across the street, even on... Even on a bad economy, we've been very blessed. We've, I think we've done a pretty good job on that development, and we've maintained the values for your EAV. We've maintained the values and brought some pretty good, actually, some excellent tenants and owners in that project. We have, only have one more lot left there, actually, and we have another restaurant planned for that, which should be breaking ground in the spring. We're going to be coming in for a permit here probably in the next ninety to one hundred and twenty days. So we will have one more restaurant in that complex. My partner on this, actually, I have two partners, Rich Wagner, who's not here tonight, but Ted and Bobby Benson, longtime residents, and they own, actually, River View over here and been developers for many, many, many years. I wouldn't ask Ted how many years, he probably wouldn't tell me, but many, can't remember, many years. And very important, I think, it's here, we are locally owned and we would maintain these apartments. They're, these are not going to be built and flipped or turned over to another management company. We would manage and maintain them ourselves. You're familiar with the Springs, obviously, we've talked about that. That's been a very successful project. It is a gated community, and since probably the biggest renters in Illinois or in Nashville are single females, that's very important, and we have looked at that. We've looked at that project and several other projects like that, and we're trying, remember, this is a concept, we have other things we want to incorporate into this. It would be another gated community. One of the problems with gated communities, and we have that actually at, I'm not picking on any other development because I read the blogs and I just drove by it on the way here, and you have a gated community and the gates open most of the time. So we would be very adamant and very diligent not to have our gates open. We also would have twenty-four hour monitoring and additional cameras and what have you, high security around the development. I think that's pretty, that's, that's very important. You are familiar with the Springs and some of the other things that we've, they've had problems or other properties like that have had problems is additional parking. They have parking out in front, but they, for guests, but the residents, actually, although it's supposed to be one point eight cars is average, the residents usually run out of parking spaces. With this, we're going to try, we might lower the density a little bit on this to add a little additional parking. Just since the last week, we've really, really been studying a little more about the parking, and we think the tenants we would have there would be happier with a little more parking than the higher density. I think that's, that's very important. We would have a clubhouse, we'd have a swimming pool, there's some, a dog park, we would have a, we would be, they would be size specific, and only a smaller portion of this would be a dog park. If you read the blogs on any apartment complex, townhome complex, that has any kind of animals, there's a lot of complaints about animals being neighbors and what have you. So we had actually, we would, the park closest to 126, closest to the dog park, we'd probably limit about four to six buildings that were, could have pets, and they would only be a specific size that we would have there, actually. We would have a car care area, nine-foot ceiling, central air and heat, all these things that I could go down right now, but they're all, all higher end to try to get the higher rents. This would not be a development for quite a few children. That's not the market we would be targeting on this. We'd be marketing, actually, the forty-four to sixty-four age group, which is your highest density in the, of renters. And I think that we would be market, our prices would be market-specific, which we would have studios, few studios, mostly one and two bedrooms, very few three bedrooms. Three bedrooms tend to go against what we're trying to do, and that brings more children to the community. Not that we're anti-children, by any means, I have two beautiful grandchildren, but I don't think this development would, would really work very well with quite a few children. Our rents would be market value, market rates probably about a thousand thirty, thousand fifty for the smallest, up to as high as twenty-eight hundred, three thousand a month if they take an extra garage, because we are, every unit will have a garage. I think that's pretty much everything that we're proposing, other than the, I think we are bringing a different than the other ones that have brought in here, been brought before you. I think we're bringing, bringing in the gas station, that's huge. We've had a gas station planned here for a couple of years, but running water and sewer out there has been a little difficult. A seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar price tag just for a gas station, although we've talked about some kind of recapture or incentive, it still doesn't pay, it's still, the payback on that just doesn't make sense. We're working with, I really can't mention, but we are working with a very high-end user for the office space, the forty thousand square feet. We're pretty close to having someone that's interested in the entire amount, might be down to thirty thousand square feet, but thirty to forty thousand square feet. The retail component of this, basically a strip center, with, we would be creating our own market with the gas station and the convenience store and the strip center. You're going to, you know, you're going to get the typical, you're going to get the nail salons, the beauty salons, the local-owned businesses that we would be catering to to service this, a cleaners, I think we'd get a cleaners there right away, which doesn't just service this, it'll service this side of town. You know, when we first came to Plainfield to develop this side of town, all my partners were a little apprehensive because if you look at the numbers, it didn't make sense. But sitting on the corner, watching, do a little due diligence around, you know, I had one partner who, we own the property together, Angelo Clarinomos, and I have another partner that we have the restaurants together, that's Steve Fodos, and Angelo's saying, I don't think a restaurant's going to work. Steve Fodos, and I'm throwing them under the bus right now, by the way. Steve Fodos is saying, ah, if it wasn't you, Harold, I wouldn't be putting a restaurant there. Well, I'm happy to say both of them are taking all the credit right now for having Southern Bell there, and it's been a, a great success. I know Dr. Tool was over on 59. Dr. Tool, the optometrist, moved over. His business went up immediately twenty-eight percent. Dr. Hodavol was right down in the corner. He struggled a little at first because he was the first one in, but now his business has jumped right up. We have a pediatric dentist that just moved in, started right out of the gates, gangbusters, doing great. So this side of town, I think the reason they're all doing so good in Southern Bell and, is because it's underserviced on this side of town. I think by adding the commercial component on this, we're going to help ourselves with the apartments, which makes sense, and that's a natural buffer to whatever residential goes behind it. It's a natural progression that goes, you can buffer this. By the way, we could burn this, we can put a zero opaqueness on this with landscaping or a fence, two, make sure we buffer any potential other residential or what have you property behind us. I think that's pretty much the overview. Any questions? What we're here for tonight, I think, is looking for a basic straw poll to see if we should go forward. As you know, to come before a planning commission, it costs quite a few dollars to prepare engineering and compare, and then come before you and then say, no, we don't want you. So my policy's always been to see if you want us or not, and, and it's a broad statement to see if Plainfield is interested in a project like this or not.
I, I will offer a couple of comments, Mr. Oliver. I'm glad to hear you say that you're considering lowering the density in the apartments. I think it's pretty high. And the second comment I have on the commercial, the twenty thousand square foot on 126 also has the word office. There are a number of offices in your development across the street. I would certainly favor commercial and retail over office space in that building.
That's, that's what we would be heading for, but yet, we would, if we did, we wouldn't be looking for the larger users there.
Or, or if it's a two-story building, for example, put the offices on the second floor.
Yeah. Well, that's why we have the thirty to forty thousand square foot office building in the back. Makes much, much more sense, much more sense.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Oliver, I have to comment on one particular fact, that I know your commercial success, your track record is very good, as indicated by the development on the corner of Van Dyke and 126 here. But my basic concern is the simple fact that I look at the, the largeness and trustee Fay has specifically stated, the density is high. You know, I always have a particular, I don't know if it's, you know, the jaundice, I look at all of the commercial office space, the gas station, et cetera, et cetera. We approve something and then all of a sudden it's bait and switch. I've seen it happen before from a developer to a particular board. Well, we can't develop the commercial now because we don't have the density, and that always disturbs me. Oftentimes, someone will work on the density and build the apartments and then don't follow through with the commercial. I've seen it in housing developments, and so, like I say, it's the bait and switch. I'm not saying you will do it, but it's a concern of mine because I don't want someone in the future saying, you know, were you born yesterday? Yes, I was, because I fell for that, you know?
Well, I have two comments, if I may on that.
Yes, please, go ahead.
First of all, Springs is less than twenty acres. We have approximately twenty-seven acres here with the same density on our, on the, what we have, and we're still looking at lowering it because I don't think, we still have enough parking on this. Second of all, I would go as far to say that if we were successful on this and Plainfield was, gave us approval, we would make part of our development agreement that the gas station would have to be built first because the gas station is ready to go. We've been ready to go with that with a, a user for the last year and a half, two years. It's just the water and sewer out there's been the problem. So we're, it's not going to be a bait and switch, and if, really, my background is all commercial, residential, although I've probably, my partner Angelo's probably built six thousand homes, I've probably built a thousand, but I've done millions of square feet of retail and office space, and that's really where I come from. That's why we did the one across the street.
You know, one final comment on my part. I know your initial presentation to this board is just a very partial presentation, nothing dramatic, nothing exact. A concern for this board, a concern for myself is, and it's philosophical to a degree, how many apartments do we need in the Village of Plainfield? And that, I, I know you're saying we need three hundred and thirty-five more. I'm saying, is that absolutely what we need? And so what I'm also saying is, I'm looking also forward to protecting the image of the Village of Plainfield so it doesn't become a giant bedroom commuter, community. In addition to that, there are other problems, obviously, associated with large apartment complexes. And so that's philosophically, those are all of the, or some of the concerns that this board will have and will have to ingest before they can give you saying, go ahead and start planning this entire thing.
Sure. Well, I think with the aesthetics of this and the looks of this, it's going to be a higher end. I know that our other success over here that built out in half the time they anticipated and leased out half the, in half the time they anticipated, shows there's a shortage in Plainfield. We would probably do, I know we would do at least a third stone in brick and stone. You see what we do across the street, a lot of brick and stone. We'd do the same thing on these architectural roof. There's some things on these apartments, engineer, energy-wise, that needs to be changed. I think they need to be a little better than just opening the front door and the wind shoots in. I think there's, if you look at most of the apartments, they put a steel door on, they don't want to put a storm door on because the storm doors cost money. Well, energy-wise, it doesn't make sense. It needs, there's a few more things that need to happen. As far as statistics and numbers, I could, I could run them to depth. I could show you every study. In fact, you've had some that I know that you've had, and they all say that we're well underserved. If you look at Plainfield, you have roughly four hundred apartments right now, talking to Mr. Garrigan, you have two hundred more paper basically approved, but nothing's happening on. You have four hundred. At four hundred with a population of forty-two thousand, you got less than one percent apartments. Illinois is eleven point six percent average. And so we're, if we add three hundred and thirty apartments on top of this, actually, if you add the two hundred, you're still only, I think the number is one point four two percent, one point four six. You add our three hundred, we're still only two percent, a little over two percent. If you look, the lowest state of the union right now is West Virginia, and they have four point eight percent of our apartments. Everyone, City of Chicago, City of Chicago, thirty-two percent. Statewide, as far as renters, thirty-five percent of our home, our residents right now rent, thirty-five percent. So if you look at thirty-five percent in Plainfield, you're, you're missing a market. You're missing the commercial side of this, and I've been appointed, Mr. Mayor Collins has been gracious enough to appoint me on your economic development, which I serve here in Plainfield. Part of our, our problem here is we are a tweener, you know, with the other cities that we have here, and we're trying to attract commercial. Well, any of my commercial, anyone I talk to, the first thing they're going to look at is your comprehensive plan, and they're also looking at what's approved and what's coming. If you limit to just, say, homes, three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars and up, we're not going to attract any. We're not going to attract any. Once you're built out, no commercial. Once you're built out, you'll get it. I just, it's just not going to happen. I, I will, I will argue that all day long. By bringing a density over here, be it three hundred, be it whatever the number that we, we settle on, that's why we want to do the commercial component, because we think by bringing that here, we're going to bring an instant business here. We think that the retail side of this, I think we are going to get mostly businesses on the front of that. And you've seen what we've done here in a bad economy over here. So statistic-wise, number-wise, if you're looking for, for any of those reports, any of those studies, again, because I know the other ones that have come here have given those to you, if you've read them, Plainfield's way behind the curve, way behind the curve. And something that's important, because I've done a lot of TIF, I've done a lot of projects where we're always worried, concerned about the schools. Project across the street, you got a hundred percent of the assets with no liabilities for the school. Sixty-five, seventy-five percent of your dollars go to schools. If you heard my presentation, we're trying to limit the children that's on here. I went as far to talk to attorneys legally, what I can limit, what I can't limit, and I can limit children. It's just no different than age restriction. We can limit that. We can limit dogs, dogs or no dogs, pets or no pets. We do have that authority to do that. As far as apartments that, the always, the, the argument is always with apartments that, oh, they come in at first and they're great. Well, twenty years down the road, now you've got low income because you got the other ones coming in. Go to Naperville, go to your other high-end communities, which Plainfield is, you're not going to have that problem. All you're going to have is affordable, maybe, because, affordable rent because the new projects are going to be obviously more expensive. Cost is always going to be more expensive as the future holds. Even right now, after two thousand eight, which I don't know how many developments you've been brought in here since two thousand eight, I'm blessed to bring one in. I've been a developer, we were going strong until two thousand eight, now nothing. But I think that you're missing, that Plainfield's missing the, missing this. Now, I'm not saying open up the floodgates. I'm saying controlled and be careful, and restrictions that you have on there, I think are important also, that you put restrictions as far as what if they're not taking care of the property? What if they're, what if, what if? We're willing to be, look at those with Plainfield, and anything that you're concerned with, try to address those concerns. Remember, we don't build these and leave. We're still here. We are your neighbors, we are your, you know, your, your citizens around, that live here. In fact, Ted and Bonnie live right here in Plainfield. So hopefully, I've addressed that. I can show you any documentation, I can show you everything that supports what I'm saying right now. In fact, if you look right back here or right here, that'll answer a lot of your questions right here.
Well, thank you for your concern, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I do, I do have a question. I congratulate you on the projects across the street.
Thank you.
They're wonderful, but looking at the concept of the way you have this layout, you have like a driveway that's somewhat like a straightaway. Has there been any consideration to changing to more of a meander type, that's the term I use, rather than have it like this? Because we have problems with this in that it's turned into speedways.
Sure. Although it is gated, you know, we do put gates, I can tell you on all the shopping centers we've ever done, I've never had a community ask me to put in speed bumps, and I've never had a shopping center that I haven't put in speed bumps. Always happens.
I didn't comment on speed.
Always happens.
I just said, a little different.
So, no, you were talking about a, a raceway through here, so I'm very familiar with that. Remember, this is a concept plan?
I know, that's why I'm bringing it in.
Yeah. This, there's nothing other than my gas station on the corner and the retail center here that's pretty much in stone, and the, the other, the office building. It made sense to have central, maybe we can move the park and what have you more toward the back and meander it in. We're, we're, you know, I think across the street from our original design with Mr. Garrigan, we changed it quite a bit. We changed the, we changed the layout, we changed the building structures. You know, you want a two-story, two stories, although they've been mentioned, are very, very difficult unless you have a higher density landlot. We have too much land out here. You can go out, it's very difficult to go up. But we changed Van Dyke Place, we went basically a story and a half. So we have the height. It looks like we have the height that you were looking for. But we did bring the, our original plan didn't have the... But we did bring the, our original plan didn't have the buildings up on the street, the streetscape. We didn't have that. So with Mr. Garrigan, uh, we, we changed everything from our beginning, but we had Plainfield support for that project, which we will spend dollars, we will hire our engineers and our architects to do other things besides concept plans, if this location and our basic design makes sense. I know it's not a guarantee, we still have to have the right density for you, we still have to have the proper layout for you, but we still have to have some kind of feel whether this makes sense for Plainfield or not.
I know, 'cause this concept is good, because we've had some discussions with the planning commission, and found out that maybe this concept is, is the right formula to have these projects looked at, and then we, they can go forward if they wish, so.
Absolutely.
And actually, it saves you money, I think.
But we appreciate that. We didn't even apply, we kept asking, being asked to put an application in, but why even put an application in if we know it's gonna be turned down? There's, it's a waste of everyone's time and energy and dollars. So all we're really looking for is a basic straw poll, whether this, there is support to develop this corner in, uh, apartments and commercial or, um, or not.
And I'll give you an answer to that, at least, uh, from my perspective, it would, would probably be a no.
Okay.
Simply because I, at this point, I, I don't see apartments as something that, that really ultimately adds to the village. And frankly, I, uh, we spend all this money on comprehensive plans, we've done it for years, we've came up with a good comprehensive plan, and I, I think we need to stick with it. This is a problem I had with the, the hundred-and-forty-third, uh, concept with, for the apartments there that didn't fit into our comprehensive plan, and it would be the same thing I had here. It doesn't fit into what our comprehensive plan calls for. I'd be willing to work with you, Harold, because I think you've done a great job across the street, and I think you, obviously, your heart's in the right place with what you want, but I, I, at this point in time, I wouldn't be supportive of it.
Thank you for your honesty.
No problem.
I was, uh, unhappy to see a gas station not succeed previously at this location. I personally feel that a gas station would be a sales tax goldmine for the village. Uh, you're gonna have a lot of people traveling from Kendall County to Chicago, you're gonna be trying to get to the highway. You have several subdivisions right there where you have residents that run out of milk and are willing to pay an extra fifty cents a gallon to just drive a few blocks to the gas station instead of maybe a couple miles to a, uh, full-fledged grocery store. Uh, I really, I like everything but the apartments. If they were townhouses or something different, um, you'd have a yes vote from me. Um, but right now, I'm, the, the apartments are a deal-breaker for me, but I really, I appreciate all the effort you've put into it, and I, I'd love to see that gas station come to fruition.
All I would ask is you do a little research on townhomes, because townhomes are individually-owned, and they have more problems in the communities with townhomes. I've done probably fifteen-hundred townhomes, and it's always, you know, there's always, 'cause of all the ownerships, it's more difficult, 'cause we still maintain ownership, we maintain the association. With all those different owners, it's much more difficult than having an apartment complex. But you can have good owners and you can have bad owners. So that would be the only change on that. So I would just encourage you to look at, to, to, to look, because apartments, especially now, since the economy, the, townhomes are not working, because still, although our, our banks still don't have this figured out. People that are, that have lost homes, people that are looking to, uh, still have good homes, they have a job, they have good cash flow, they don't have the down payment. So the apartments, that's why they're at such an upscale right now. Uh, financing's not as easy to get.
If there's any particular study that you'd be interested in sharing with me and the rest of the board, then, please go ahead and email it to our staff, they'll forward it to all of us, and if I change my position, I'd be happy to email you back and let you know.
I'd be glad to do that, thank you.
I was just gonna say that, obviously, uh, the gas station'd be great, 'cause at the west end of town, that whole area from the southwest and the west is underserved, I think, in that area. I, I, I love what you did across the street, I supported it, and I think, um, any of the commercial and the business side of it, but I have never been a fan of the, I shouldn't say never, I did, I did support the Springs, but going forward, I am not looking at three-hundred-unit apartment complexes, it's just, I'm a no vote, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, from my point of view, I'd like to encourage the development. Uh, the gas station's something, but if you're gonna have to invest seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to get the services, you need to have more than that to make it viable, without a doubt, so, uh, so I've kind of conditional support, if you will. I like the idea of developing this particular area. We've been fussing with it for several years, and it really hasn't gone anywhere. Uh, I have a problem, though, because we have these other two proposals, and I think we need, for apartment complexes, and I think we need to assess that, is this the best one? Uh, or are the other locations, and looking at just yours tonight, doesn't give us that assessment. Uh, I'll compliment you on the fact you've given us more insight into market information than we've had from anybody else so far, and I think that's a perspective which is very useful, and your background in developing the commercial side is important, too, 'cause I think we need to do more in that general area. Uh, I think you need to take a look at the, the parking and see what your density makes sense. It needs to be, um, a jewel of a community, if you will, within Plainfield. Uh, you got to talk about the swimming pool, clubhouse, things like that, but parking and amenities, you, it needs to be a place that people wanna be, and I don't know what the density will be for that. Uh, the other part of it is the elevations. You haven't talked about how the elevations are gonna look, you talked about the rents and what's inside, but one of the things that we've been addressing here for the last couple of years is how the outside of the buildings that go up in, uh, Plainfield look, particularly the houses, that's why we have our single-family designs and so on, so I, I think that would be an important part, too, because one of the things that, at least I do, and I think the rest of the board looks at, too, well, are we proud to have this amenity or housing development in Plainfield? Uh, density doesn't turn us on necessarily, but appearance, uh, I think is something we do value, so maybe looking at that part of it, and, uh, so I, I'd be interested in seeing more.
On the architectural side, we, I spoke about approximately a third would be stone and stone, and the roof would be more of an architectural roof, so.
Yeah, I think it needs to be more than just a standard, I mean, Chicago's got a lot of apartments, to be sure, but, you know, most of them are pretty bland.
Yeah.
I think we like something a little bit more special that fits in with basically a, a residential community here.
Absolutely. We agree. So, is that a yes vote, a no vote?
I'm, I'm more inclined on the yes side, because I like to see the development go in that direction. We have a lot of space out there, and I like to see it done well. We have a lot of homework to figure out just exactly how to do it, because we, the idea of having a thousand-acre development isn't gonna fly.
Oh.
And so now we gotta, how we figure these, put these pieces together such that they all work, and this could be one, if we think through how it integrates and the benefits and so on, but we have, we have some more homework, too, to figure that out.
Do you know how many lots are available right now in the, uh, in Chicagoland area? Ready-to-build lots?
A lot, yes.
Any idea? Forty-seven thousand.
Good chunk of them are here in Plainfield, too.
And so if you look at the inventory, and you, all you have to do is the, the math, take each municipality, see what the highest year they had in permits, and it'll tell you how many we have in reserve right now. So it'll be a while, be a while for that's gone, before a new subdivision comes in, before a new one comes in.
Oh, I, I, we understand the problem.
Pardon me?
We understand the problem, yes.
Yeah, well, it's a problem for us, too.
Oh, I know. I applaud you continue to look to develop in this environment, because it's a challenge.
You know, it appears I'm the last individual to speak as a trustee, uh, in giving you perhaps direction. Uh, one thing I think everybody on this particular board has to be, uh, aware of is the fact of discriminatory preference. Uh, allowing you to move forward, we, someone could simply say to me, "Special interests," uh, because I have voted against a number of apartment complexes in, uh, in this past year. And so in the proceed forward, uh, someone would say, "Why are you giving preference to this when you turned me down on a hundred and, on Route Thirty or wherever I had done it?" Uh, that is a, um, a particular concern of mine. Another thing, uh, Mr. Oliver, is the density is specifically too high, in my estimation. Three-hundred particular units, uh, three-hundred-and-thirty-five units in that particular area is entirely too high. Uh, I have concerns about futures of apartments. Uh, they look great for the first few years, after that, uh, it's always a concern, you had, uh, you had dismissed that with another trustee, simply saying, "That doesn't happen." Well, I've seen too many apartment, excuse me, I'll, I'll finish, and then you'll be able to rebut. Uh, I like the idea of, uh, you putting in commercial, uh, we need it, we, that is a totally underserved area, uh, we could expand westward, and it'd be good for the economy also. There are an awful lot of pluses, but there are awful lot of negatives that I have to be concerned with. Uh, what I say, uh, proceed, I, if you choose to, uh, discuss this with our administration and our planning department, uh, see if we can come up with something that would balance the, the advantages of the fields versus what we dismissed as being not good for Plainfield. And so how do I leave you, by saying yes or no? Uh, I think, and I know, uh, Mr. Collins does not like to hear this, I need more information. And I think everybody in this board needs more information in order to make a really accurate, intelligent decision.
But if, if we were able to lower the density, what kind of density, I hear, keep hearing that, what kind of density are we looking for? What is in your mind?
I think it's hard to answer. I think it's more a matter of how the overall appearance looks. The mayor's suggested, you know, maybe not straight streets, things like that, changes the appearance, and, uh, one of the things I say at the comprehensive plan group when we were talking about things, feeling of a community, we like this to be a community where everybody there really enjoys being there, they're part of it. If you could create that kind of atmosphere, exactly how you do it, I'm not sure, but that's the sort of thing that we had talked about, that seemed to make sense, as we went throughout these pods in the southwest area.
Sure.
So it's, I think it's a lot how it looks, and if it's really inviting for people, as the Springs appear to be, a good location for it, by the way, was, but, you know, they appear to have a design that worked, too, 'cause people, too, come in before you, have said, "We're gonna follow the Springs model." Hey, great!
We're gonna make changes from the Springs.
That's good, I'd like to, some, some creativity, but, you know, looking to create the sense of community, however you can do that, and you've got experience with a variety of things, and I think your insights would be very useful. I'd love to see it. I'd like to see it go forward, uh, but in a reasonable way. If it turns out we're not gonna get what we want, then we ought not to lead you on too long, but I think, as trustee Ratchett just said, we could use some more information, a little bit more development, a little bit more meat on the bones, and then integrate some of the things we're talking about and see what happens.
Okay.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments?
I just have one, uh, comment, uh, for all staff. We've had a longstanding practice of not receiving literature of any kind on the night of a board meeting or a workshop. Um, when we have applicants coming before us, can you make sure that they are, they have been communicated with, that handouts the night of, we haven't had time to study or look at?
That's fine.
Thank you.
That's partially our fault, we brought handouts this evening. We, we found out the last part of the week that we were gonna be on the agenda and quite on everything.
It's okay, Harold, we blame Michael, it's fine.
Okay. Good, I'll blame him, too. All right. So if we change the, uh, if, I understand, right, a little more information, change the density, obviously the, the commercial we're in favor of. Remember, it's very expensive to run water and sewer out there. Running water and sewer out there, the bad with the good, for maybe you give a little,